Will we do the, okay. Yeah, Jim? Okay. Yep, that's Red Sox head on. Like to call this meeting to order, please. We'll start with the singing of Oh Canada, Council of Cleveland will lead us and we're going to have a moment of silence for the tragedy in Humboldt Saskatchewan right after that. And we can remain standing for that, please.
Oh Canada, our home and native land, true patriot love and all our Saskatchewan. With bowing hearts we see the rise, the true Lord strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you, everybody. Any conflicts of interest tonight? Good. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Council McLeod.
Attempt to make a motion, and the reason is obvious, we're all wearing some hockey T-shirts or other shirts, so in regards to the tragedy in Humboldt Saskatchewan.
Put that under 8B, under new business. Also like to have a motion to excuse her worship, she's away on town business. She's on the executive union Nova Scotia municipalities which has meetings tonight and tomorrow. Move to second, and all those in favor. Contrary, Councilor Cleveland.
I don't see it here, so I'd like to have an addition to have a member of Communities in Bloom, a new volunteer approved.
Okay, that will be under 8C, okay? Any other additions or deletions? Motion to accept the agenda with the additions. Moved by Council Barry, second by Council McLeod. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Thank you. Approval of the minutes, public hearing, March the 8th, 2018. Moved by Council McLeod. Second by Councilor Dennis. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion is passed. Motion to accept the town council minutes of March the 8th, 2018. Moved by Council Dennis, second by Council Barry. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion is passed. Motion to accept the town council special minutes, March the 28th, 2018. Moved by Council Cleveland, second by Councilor Barry. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion is passed. Motion to accept the committee of the whole minutes of March the 28th, 2018. Moved by Council McLeod. Second by Council Cleveland. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Thank you. Motion to accept the committee of the whole, March the 29th, 2018. Moved by Council Barry. Second by Councilor Dennis. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Thank you. Business arising, 7A Bicycle Art Project. CAO?
Thank you, worship. At our last committee of the whole meeting, we had a presentation from Amanda Dontramont about a bicycle art project she wished to carry out on Main Street, and I believe everyone was present for that. So, we don't make decisions on the evening of a presentation, so it was agreed to put it on this agenda for discussion and perhaps decision.
Anybody? Council Cleveland.
Well, I have nothing to say, other than the fact that I was very enthused by the presentation she made. I thought it was very, very good, and I have no problem supporting that motion.
So you'll make the motion to support the bicycle art project?
Absolutely.
Second by Council Barry. Any other questions or discussion? CAO?
Your worship, I would suggest that direction be given, if the motion passes, direction be given to staff to develop an agreement for the installations, so that we have on record the conditions under which it's acceptable to keep the art installations, and for how long. And that gives us something, a clear understanding with the artist from start to finish.
Vote on the amendment first? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Vote on the main motion. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Thank you. 2018 USN, UNSM Priorities on Council Agendas. CAO?
Your worship, the UNSM has communicated with all of its member municipalities, indicating a number of possible priorities that came up from their membership. So what they were asking is each of its member municipal councils to discuss these 10 priority areas, and to respond back to them with those that you feel are the most important, and why, and how it impacts your community, and suggestions of how you'd like to see it addressed. And so, I guess the first step is, of those 10 areas, are there some that particularly resonate with you with respect to our community?
Council McLeod.
I have three favorites. Is that how do we, how should we proceed? So, but all of us are going to have perhaps different favorites. So, I would be looking at number five, housing, and I would be looking at number seven, municipal modernization, and I would be looking at number eight, minimum planning standards. They're all, they're all important, but I like those three in particular.
I think there are two that should be just taken out of there, because they're already happening or about to happen. Cannabis legalization, number two. The province announced its legalization, legal framework last week. And number three, the code of conduct workshop is going on in a couple days, or it's already...
On the 20th, I think, Council Hood, yep.
So really, I don't think we need to concern ourselves with those two items, Council.
Councilor McLeod, you have another comment? You had your light on? You're good? Council Cleveland.
Deputy Mayor, there are three that jump at me. Actually, I'll be honest with you, there's four. And the four that are most important to me are number five, which is housing, number six, which is immigration, which I believe is a key for this particular area. Economic development is the number four one, again, it's key to us, and I believe we need to all have a serious discussion about police services, which is the 10th.
Councilor Hood.
So, I think, for me, anyway, item number eight, minimum planning standards, regional planning, there are challenges in the ways communities can adapt to more frequent and extreme weather, et cetera, et cetera. They need to go further than that, because we need to look, but the whole idea of anything to do with regional planning is a thing that I think we need to move forward on as a priority.
Do you think, under number seven, and under number eight, what you're talking about, is there an opportunity?
Those two.
Those two, do you think there's a symmetry in those two?
I do. Or at least, they're connected.
Yes.
At the very least, they're connected. Because the planning thing, we talked informally there, talked about perhaps looking at a model for regional government, and the key thing in there would be, in the planning area, to completely revamp the Planning Act, so as, so that planning would not be confined to just municipal boundaries, but would be adopted on a regional basis, and yet you would plan, you'd change the zones, to say, and urban zones, based on the geography of the region, and based on the areas where it would be reasonable to expect that urban-type services, which would be defined, would be located over the next 50-year span, or 100 even. And, and so those kinds of, that's the kind of thing that I think could be talked about under those two items.
I kind of, I'm kind of along the lines of Council Cleveland and yourself, Council Hood, on housing. I think immigration, if you listen to the Don Mills Hupp Strategy, and what immigration means to the province of Nova Scotia, and also municipal modernization, and what you said, the planning aspect. So, do we pick three tonight, CAO, or do we? I think we basically probably all in agreement on what they are, and I'll let, it's going to be Councilor Dennis next, and then if Jeff wants to answer this one. Jeff, and then you, Sandy, okay?
Okay, so, if you wish tonight, if you're ready tonight to put your stamp, I didn't look at the letter to see what the deadline is, but you definitely should be heard on this, and...
April 30th.
April 30th, so if you're not ready tonight, you could do it at the committee of the whole, but if you're ready tonight to signal your preferences, then we can...
Do you think we'll go with Councilor Dennis? Do you think if we bring back or give to Linda our three preferences, and then we go from there? Talk about it at the committee of the whole, see what the top numbers are? Do it individually, give it to Linda, and then go from there? Is that all right?
So, do we agree that the two, that two and three come out?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Two and three come out? They're, they're already in the process, and from what I heard, I don't know what Council Dennis is going to say, but I don't think those have been discussed as a priority with us right now.
So I wonder if Linda could prepare a revised list with two and three out? Send them around with little checkmarks, and we'll rank them one day...
One to, one to eight, or whatever, yeah, one day, because the two are out. Okay. We can do that, Linda? Jeff, that's... Okay, good. Council Dennis.
Okay, number four, sorry, number five, which is housing, which we really need affordable housing here. We have housing, but there's a lot of people that are moving around here, and they can't find apartments. So we definitely need to look into housing. And my next one would be immigration, to add to our population. But even with immigration, they still need housing.
That's right.
So that's the hard part. We just had a couple here, a couple of weeks ago, and we just couldn't find any housing for them. So we had to put them in the, up in the motel for a week, and I don't know what happened to them after that. So it's really difficult to get decent housing.
Okay, good. So Linda, you're going to prepare that, and you'll, probably early next week, that'll be ready? Okay. Thank you, everybody. New Business Solid Waste Resource Bylaw. CAO?
So your worship, a couple months ago, Waste Check, our regional waste authority, circulated a new model bylaw that they had developed, and sent it out to all the municipal partners for consideration. Our solid waste bylaw was approximately 10 years old since the last time it was, it was updated. And so even the, so things that were out of date in our bylaw were around how we deal with special waste. We now have collections through the regular calendar. The clear bag was not specified in our current bylaw. And so what I did is I took the current bylaw provisions with no changes, except those that I've just mentioned, the schedule and the sort provisions, and transpose those same provisions into the Waste Check model bylaw. Now, the one change I made to how they, how they set up the model bylaw, is that they had proposed that things like schedule and sortation would be done by policy by the council, and there, and just reference that way through the bylaw. I talked to, to our solicitor about that, and that certainly is a, is a, an acceptable way to do it, but I think it's confusing enough for people that we have, you know, six municipalities within the Waste Check area, all with their separate bylaws, to then take our, our provisions and divide those into policies and a bylaw. I thought, why not just put it all in the bylaw, so it can be found in one place and referenced in one place by the bylaw enforcement officer? So the draft bylaw that you have, I believe, represents what we have in place today for solid waste bylaw regime. It's up to date, and it is in the format, generally in the format that Waste Check has proposed. So I'd ask you to consider this evening, first reading, to repeal the existing solid waste bylaw, and replace it with this bylaw.
So moved by Council Hood for first reading? Seconded by Council Cleveland. Any questions or comments? CAO?
Yeah, I just have one, one comment that I would bring to your attention, that in the process of doing this work, it became top of mind to me that there were a number, that we have actual, a provision about storage of solid waste on residential property. And the storage is to occur in weatherproof and rodent-proof containers at the side yard or rear yard of a property, not in, not in the front yard. And a number of properties had introduced those curbside wooden, wooden boxes, or boxes with, with a place to put their compost bin by, by the roadside. And so what I did is I asked our bylaw enforcement officer to advise residents who had those in place, that they were contrary to our bylaw, and asked them to remove them. At the same time, given that we were bringing forward this bylaw, there is an opportunity with second reading and a public hearing for people to come forward and state their, their concerns, if they felt that that was a provision, or any other provision that ought to be changed. So rather than doing the bylaw, and then coming behind afterwards and telling people, we thought, well, let's get out ahead of this process, and make people aware, and so if they have an objection or a concern, they can, they can introduce it through this process, rather than redoing for amendment purposes in a couple months' time.
And that's going to be advertised in the paper?
So, yes.
And be on our website?
Right, so the bylaw is, right now, the draft bylaw is on the agenda, so it's available that way. We will be putting out a notice on our website, through social media, and through the regular media, that we're considering this repeal and replace, and, you know, all the provisions are there. And hopefully, if people have any concerns, they will, they will either respond in writing, or they'll show up at the public hearing next month.
Okay, good. Councilor McLeod.
I just, I'm glad that Jeff spoke up the way he did, because there are some property owners who prepare those receptacles in a very nice way, and there are, and there are a number that don't. But not, that only, that not only occurs in the town of Yarmouth, but that occurs in the county of Yarmouth, too. So there are, so this solid waste by, would reflect the county also, the sister municipality? It's just the town of Yarmouth? Okay, so I just, you know, I'm glad that we're going through a process, Jeff, which will hopefully encourage participation by the concerned public. Thanks very much, your worship.
Thank you. Councilor Hood.
Your worship, I just had a look at the bylaw, and subsection E, which the public will probably be glad to hear, "No person shall pick up, remove, disturb, or otherwise interfere with solid waste placed at the curb for municipal collection, except as authorized by the town." I think, "except as authorized by the town," or the property owner, might be, you might add that to the end of that? Now, in the next paragraph, I've, solid waste placed at the curb from municipal collection becomes the property of the town, once the collector places the solid waste in the collection vehicle. It should be clear that it's the property of the property owner, until that takes place. So maybe you can make, take a look at the...
Yep, good point.
I think the two are kind of tied together, to get the language correct.
So...
Go ahead.
Your worship, that is, that is a change, and I had, I had forgotten, I made that change. The previous bylaw had the materials placed at the curb become the property of the town at the moment the property owner placed them at the curb. Well, that's problematic, because if people put stuff out the night before, you know, it blows all over the place, or it's not properly sorted, what we've been in the habit of doing is, well, telling people to pick it up, or if it's not properly sorted, tagging it, so in fact rejecting it. But if it's our property, at the point that it's placed at the curb, it's our problem. So this way, it isn't our problem until the collector deems it acceptable to take. And up until that point, and as long as it's on the curb, it is the property owner's responsibility under this bylaw. That's the way it was intended, anyway.
So what I'm suggesting is you make it clear?
Yep.
That it is? That's all I'm, I am suggesting, you make it clear, because I know that the odd time that I've gone out and shoot off one of those people that are rooting through the bag, I've always proceeded on the basis that I own it, until the town takes it, but it should say so, I think. Thank you.
Good. Any other questions, comments? No, we're not, no, it's all right, Joe. We're good, buddy. Yeah. Yeah. What they're talking about, actually, they're talking about maybe one of these days, somebody, they might be collecting it maybe more than once a week in the summertime, but we're not, or not more than once every two weeks, but that's a discussion we could have at budget time. So I know a lot of people put a lot of, a lot of clippings and prunings in their bin at this time of year, but that's something that we were looking at, so thank you for your comment, Joe. Or they might ask, that's right, and sometimes they could ask for a second bin, too. Okay? Right on. Council Dennis.
Is there anything in place for when people do root in your garbage, and then leave it on the ground and everything? Like, any, can anything, is there anything, though, that can happen to the person that actually does that?
Well, if they did that, they would be interfering with your ownership.
Right.
And they would be in kind of mention in bylaw technically, so if you were able to catch them, you could give them a ticket to think for bylaw enforcement.
Yeah, so, so the counselor's right, that's the way I see it as well. I do acknowledge, though, that there are people who don't mind that, that in fact don't mind. Now, if you want to put out returnables for somebody to come and take, I think you should do it in a separate bag, so that it doesn't create a problem in the neighborhood, but not everybody wants somebody to come and take them and get into their garbage, so if there's a complaint, we can deal with it.
Okay.
The owner of the property can authorize until the garbage is taken away. Could authorize an individual to take them. That's those two sections that are writ? Owner could authorize that.
Yes.
But only if the owner...
It's just that I've seen a lot of people complain about someone coming through and rooting in their garbage, so...
Good, thank you.
I just wanted to know. Thank you.
Call for the question? Question's been called for. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Thank you. 8B, Council McLeod, Humboldt. 8B. The letter of condolence? Jim, can you, Council McLeod can turn your light on, please?
Thank you. Appreciate that, your worship. So, the motion that I've crafted is, "Whereas the town of Yarmouth supports the families of the Humboldt Broncos, and encourages everyone in Yarmouth to wear a hockey jersey or green and gold to show their support and pay tribute to the memory of those lost in last week's tragic bus crash."
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Not even going to ask for a contrary on that one. 8C, Communities in Bloom, Councilor Cleveland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. It's time for a replacement to be put on the Communities in Bloom Committee. We had a vacancy, because the local garden club usually has a representative on there, and the previous representative resigned, was unable to continue. And so we had an application from Jean Cluley. She filled out the proper form, and I'm looking for confirmation that she can become a member of Communities in Bloom.
You make that a motion, I'll second it.
I make that a motion.
Council Cleveland made a motion to accept Jean Cluley on Communities in Bloom, she'd be a great asset. Councilor McLeod will second that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Thank you. 9A, Council Advisory Committees, Committee of the Whole, March the 28th. Council McLeod.
There's two items. I move that staff be directed to provide a report on a draft policy for the use of porta potties in parks in our town of Yarmouth.
Moved to second. Any questions or comments? CAO?
I assume the policy would be dealing with the provision of porta potties, not necessarily the use?
You're causing, you're causing a smile, Jeff. That's good for you.
Councilor Hood?
So when we develop the policy, shouldn't we consider it from the point of view, if and when needed? Within the sole discretion of council, or the CAO, or this... All right. When and if.
Okay, good. You've got that in consideration, Jeff? Okay, good. Have a mover and seconder? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Council McLeod.
Second item of two, on that day, I move that staff be directed to un-gang the garbage receptacles, to make them more, make them more frequent on our Main Street.
Moved to second it. Any questions or comments? Councilor Hood?
Took a look, we had a little talk informally about this the other day, and I took a look at the four that are by the Brown Street parking lot today, actually, I was in to the Bread and Oles or something. And those need to be taken up, they, I think they're bolted down, and taken somewhere sandblasted and redone, I think, before you do anything. And the other ones are likely in the same condition. They're not ruined or anything, they're capable of...
Getting refurbished?
Yes.
Put that one on the CAO's test. Lynn's got that? Okay. Do we have a, do we have a seconder for that?
Yes.
Moved to second it.
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion is passed. Councilor McLeod, Committee of the Whole, April the 11th, 2018.
So the one item on that day, I move that the grant allocations for the 2018, 2019 fiscal year be approved.
Moved to second it. Any questions or comments? Will those be available when on the website, that they can... Okay, okay. Moved to second it. Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Citizen Advisory Committees, who seconded? I think Council Cleveland did. Citizen Advisory Committees, Planning Advisory Committee, Councilor McLeod.
Four items, from our Planning Advisory Committee meeting of March the 6th. First one, I move to proceed to a public hearing, in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the land use bylaw to rezone 112 Parade Street to a medium-density residential as outlined in our planner's report.
We have a seconder. Seconded by Counselor Barry. Tony, we have the owner of the property, too, Tony, and you'll be able to speak at the next, at the next meeting, okay? So if there's anybody opposed, or anybody else is in agreement with you, they can have an opportunity to say what they want to say the next meeting.
Second item, uh-
Question, question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Counselor McLeod.
Second item, I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw to fix various cross-reference corrections and minor conflicts, as outlined in our planner's report.
Do we have a seconder? Can we get a little overview on that, Jim?
Well-
Counselor McLeod, please.
I'll start, and then Jeff can fill in. But basically, when we completed our last strategy review, and passed it, and our council has passed it, there's always a couple of items here and there that we need to dot the i's and cross the t's, and make some minor corrections. Does not reflect any changes in the direction of our strategy.
Okay, good.
Item, various cross-references here?
Yes.
And, and the request for decision? Okay.
Question been called?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Counselor McLeod.
I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the land use bylaw to permit accessory buildings in the front yard within the institutional zone, as outlined in our planner's report.
Seconded by Counselor Dennis. Any questions or comments? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Counselor McLeod.
Fourth and last item, fellow counselors and your worship. I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend our land use bylaw to permit accessory buildings in the front and flanking yard within the general commercial and commercial industrial zones, as outlined in our planner's report.
Seconded by Counselor Barry. Any questions, comments, concerns? Call for the question?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Thank you, Counselor. Reports for information, Western County's Regional Library, December the seventh, twenty seventeen. Yarmouth County's Solid Waste Park, February the seventh, twenty eighteen. There's no mayor's report tonight. Do we have any questions for committee chairs, or comments? Counselor Cleveland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The only comment I have, I don't have a question. I am the committee chair for Communities in Bloom, and I have another event I want to push, and you can find it on Facebook if you're looking. You can, there's a Communities in Bloom group that if anybody were interested in, feel free to join that. But coming up is Adopt a Block. Now, it's part of the Great Nova Scotia Pick Me Up, which is just, it's a litter-cleaning exercise, which happens every year. And we all know the problem that we have with litter, not just here, but everywhere. Adopt a Block this year runs the week of, it's coming up, actually, on the fifteenth is the Sunday, and it leads up until Earth Day, which is the twenty-second of April, which is the following Sunday, so it's that week. If the weather isn't great next week, which by the looks of the forecast, now, granted whether or not you can trust that, that far ahead, but if the weather happens to be not the best, feel free to register for it, and do it a little bit later on. That's fine, too. But what you do is you register with, with Waste Check. There's a number, you can find it on, on any of our social media. You can find it on my social media, on the towns as well. You register yourself. They supply gloves, they supply bags. What they're looking for, hopefully, are groups of volunteers who will adopt areas in the town, and clean them up. Once they're cleaned up, you can make arrangements. Public Works will come and pick those bags up. They'll all be taken care of for you. And we'd like to have, we'd like to have the entire town taken care of. So if anybody would like to volunteer, we'd absolutely love to have you do that. And you can call Waste Check. I think it's seven four two thirteen twelve.
And you're available to talk to Tina afterwards, right?
I am, certainly. Actually, already-
You already got, you already got him? Okay, good.
Already did my pitch, so.
Really good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Motion to, we have something in camera, I believe? No? Nothing in camera? Motion? Just, yeah, motion to, motion to adjourn. Kevin North could have been here tonight. Motion to adjourn, wait. One thing in camera. Motion to go in camera. Thank you, everybody. Go.